Counsel ready? We'll call the city council meeting to order. And please ask the city clerk to call the rule.
The record will show all members are present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Please join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We did have, oh, approval of the agenda first. Is there any changes to the agenda, Mr.?
Mayor, there are no additions or deletions to the agenda.
Okay, very good. And we did have a closed session prior to this meeting. So I'd like to have Mr. Piper report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet in closed session for the, to discuss the legal matter, item CS1. The matter was discussed. There was no action taken that's required to be reported.
Okay, thank you. There are no presentations, so we'll go to oral communications. This is an opportunity you have to speak for three minutes on anything that's not on the agenda. And we have two individuals that have submitted slips that would like to speak. First of all, Mr. Robert White.
Good evening. My name is Robert White. I live in the Melrose Park condominiums on North Melrose at 371 North Melrose Drive, Unit H. I have two personal questions. I'm not representing anybody tonight. The first one is, has, what was the final resolution of trying to put groceries into Walmart on Sycamore?
Mr. Piper, would you like to respond to that since it's, there's a lawsuit that's involved in that right now?
Yeah, the union's acting like a four-year-old who can't have a piece of candy.
Right.
And the legal proceedings over the candy are still underway.
That's a good answer.
And will probably remain so for several more months.
Okay. My main question is, about ten days ago, I had a confrontation, well, I had a verbal confrontation with some Jehovah's Witnesses on our property. This is a unit of 176 condos. They were told, they told me that they had permission from the city council to come onto our property and be religious terrorists and harass people. My question is, what authority does the council have to give them permission to play religious terrorists?
Well, number one, the city council doesn't give permission because we don't have the authority to give permission. Mr. Piper, would you like to respond to that question?
I was told they had gotten it from the city council, sir.
Certainly, the city council has at no time considered that issue or given them any kind of permission. Indeed, we couldn't give them permission to enter onto private property. They might possibly have a solicitation permit which identifies who they are, but that does not give them any special access to private property.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. That concludes my business.
Okay, Chuck Rabel?
And my ladies, sorry, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent Drive. At least twice a day, if not four times a day, I drive South Melrose. And every time I drive down there, I see that that fire station's under construction. And I know that that's being built with taxpayer money. I also understand that the city councils, or that the City of Vista endems itself, and we don't have an insurance policy on it. If it does, something happens to it, the taxpayers are out, whatever monies go up and smoke. The county recommends 100 feet clear zone in an area such as the wilderness, if you will, or the, whatever we want to call it down there on South Melrose. City staff I talked to said, "Yeah, but we're talking to so-and-so in Fish and Game and what, dunno what." Hey, it's our money, folks. We need to light a fire under somebody because that's a threat to the taxpayer dollars that is erecting that building. And I urge you, don't settle for no answer. Let's do something. The other side of it, it's a, it's a great place to show everybody, because everybody drives by it, how things are supposed to be protected, as opposed to the opposite. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Rabel. Oh, okay, I think we have one more that wanted to speak under all communications. Mr. Dot Org.
Policewatch.org. The economy. Isn't it funny how we're all gonna go deep in, deep six under because of what with this economy? There's three things. Can you guess? It's transparency, accountability, and independent monitoring. That's now costing us $700 billion. And that probably won't solve the economy. Everybody, so many people are gonna be on the streets. Isn't that wonderful? Because of those three things. Those three things that I've been talking about for how many years now until my last breath concerning police brutality, police perjury, police false charging? And there's not a drop of those three things? Internal affairs? No. Any kind of real legal action? No. Unless you've got tens of thousands of dollars. Most people affected and done to by those three things I mentioned by cops don't have a pot to piss in in the realm of monies. Tonight, maybe he's already dead, but a man accused of killing a cop is either put to death, or maybe the Supreme Court held it off, but all the jurors came forward and said that what they said, what they agreed to, or what they, what the verdict that they agreed to, they completely disagreed on. And, excuse me, I'm getting a little lost here. The witnesses in the case, seven or eight, or most, all of these witnesses said that they either were coerced, or they said the exact opposite of what they believed this gentleman had done. But since it's against a police officer, chances are, truth, reality, fact, you know, video cameras, jumping up and down, is not gonna change anybody's mind in the criminal system. And why do we have all these problems with the criminal system and the police? Because people in this country are in a coma. They should be doing what I'm doing. Speaking out, speaking up, and speaking out about evil. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our oral communications. Next, we'll go to the one item that we have on the agenda this evening, and that's the public hearing. This is a continued public hearing. It continued from August the 26th. And it's the, it was continued at that time by the city council and the Community Development Commission. And we'll have a staff presentation by Mr. Jeff Zinner.
Mayor, before we do, I think I need to recuse myself.
Could you turn the volume up then? Okay. Okay, we have two members of the council that need to excuse themselves.
Mayor, thank you. In 1985, I had the pleasure and honor of serving as the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee to create the original redevelopment plan. I've had property in the, in the community long before that, and some of it may be included if the council so decides in this new expansion area. Thereby, I need to recuse myself, and sorry, I can't be involved. Thank you.
Okay.
Back when we brought redevelopment here to the City of Vista, I was, I was a strong supporter of it. I was on those committees. And I felt it was a good thing for our downtown because our, of the blighted areas that we had in the downtown area. And I think it's a good tool, but I also have to excuse myself in this. I don't want to, but I have to. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We'll wait till they are out of the room, and then, Mr. Zinner, if you'd proceed with your staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Bill Rawlings, Director of Redevelopment. And as you said, Mayor, Mr. Zinner has a short presentation tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Chairman, members of the city council, and members of the Community Development Commission. In 1987, the city adopted the Vista redevelopment plan. This action created a redevelopment project area of 2,106 acres and established the basis for the use of redevelopment to approve, improve the Vista community. Since that time, redevelopment has made many notable contributions to the Vista community. Some of the more prominent projects include the Cedar Nettleton Project, the Vista Business Park, and a project we're all familiar with, the Vista Village Center. Tonight, you're asked to consider approval of Amendment Number Four to the Vista redevelopment plan. The proposed amendment will add approximately 1,700 acres to the project area and will provide the city with greater opportunities to use redevelopment to effect positive change benefiting all members of the community. Specifically, this proposed amendment is intended to give the city another tool to address council priorities by bringing infrastructure improvements such as sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and streetlights to certain residential neighborhoods, and also to facilitate development along Vista's major commercial corridors to attract needed amenities to the city. Redevelopment utilizes tax increment financing, which allocates a greater proportion of property tax revenue to the commission, which must be used to make improvements within the project area. It does not raise property tax rates. The process to amend the redevelopment plan began formally on November 27, 2007. At that time, the city council designated survey area boundaries, which was essentially the first step in a lengthy and well-defined statutory process. The agency has complied meticulously with the processes detailed in the California Health and Safety Code pursuant to those sections commonly referred to as the California Community Redevelopment Law. Over the past 10 months, in part to comply with requirements of the law, but primarily to inform and include the public in the process, numerous public outreach activities have been completed. Over 250,000 newsletters in 11 separate publications have been mailed, which contained information about the plan amendment. Most of these were also made available in Spanish. Staffs conducted two formerly noticed community meetings. Staff has made presentations before various community groups such as the Vista Village Business Association, the Vista Townsite Community Partnership, and the Chamber of Commerce, among others. A nine-member project area committee was elected with members representing owners, tenants, businesses, and community organizations from the project area and the proposed amendment area. The PAC is met on a regular basis beginning in April. Also, information has been posted consistently on the city's website. A press briefing was held for the media, and various consultations were held with the affected, with the affected taxing agencies. And finally, staff has responded to numerous telephone calls, emails, letters, and office visits from the public. The vast majority of these contacts were very positive in this, in that staff was able to provide and discuss factual information regarding redevelopment and the proposed plan amendment. In addition, there have been over 35 newspaper articles written which provided information and discussed the proposed plan amendment. As part of the statutory process, the Planning Commission, the Community Development Commission, and the city council have taken actions related to the plan amendment at no less than eight publicly noticed meetings. These actions have included approving the preliminary plan, calling for the formation of the project area committee, confirming the project area committee election, establishing the base year which is the basis for future tax increment, adopting owner participation rules and a method for relocation, and amending the amendment area boundaries based on further blight analysis, which ended up reducing the boundaries of the proposed amendment area. One important concern raised during this process has been eminent domain. And it is important to restate once again that the existing redevelopment plan and the proposed amendment do not allow the city to use eminent domain to acquire residentially zoned property. Furthermore, state law through the recent passage of Proposition 99 now provides additional protection to homeowners by prohibiting the use of eminent domain to acquire owner-occupied homes regardless of zoning. The report to the city council documents that the proposed Amendment Number Four to the Vista redevelopment plan is sound and complies with the redevelopment, with the requirements of state law. On June 20, on July 21, 2008, the project area committee voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment. On August 5, 2008, the Planning Commission also voted to recommend approval of the proposed amendment. And in addition, the Vista Townsite Community Partnership, the Vista Village Business Association, and the Chamber of Commerce all recommend approval of the amendment. In closing, to proceed tonight requires that the city council and commission take the following recommended actions. You need to, first, you need to complete the continued joint public hearing, adopt the recommended resolutions as shown on the screen, and finally, introduce the ordinance approving Amendment Number Four to the Vista redevelopment plan. At this time, that concludes staff's presentation, and Mr. Rawlings and I are available for any questions.
Okay, are there any questions of staff before we hear from those that are in the public? I'm sorry, this is turned up. Can you hear us up here? Okay, thank you. Okay, this is the time for you to come forward and to speak, and so I'll call those that have submitted speaker slips in the order that I receive them, and we'll proceed on that basis. The public hearing is, as we said before, open. And the first individual, Marsha Holland?
Good evening. My name is Marsha Holland. I live at 719 Bel Air Drive West. And I am here to say that I have served as the chairman of the project area committee. We've met bi-monthly since April, working with the city to review the plan amendment and the reports that were generated along with it. And in August, we did vote unanimously to recommend this report to the council. So I have enjoyed working with the city on this, and I look forward to the benefits that will come from it.
Thank you. Next is Brett McFarlane.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, I'm just, I don't have any special interest, business, or anything like that, but I run around Vista with myself and my family and go to all the different stores and activities. And I mentioned it one of the last meetings. There must be something big behind redevelopment for anybody to be against it. I'm not gonna say I understand all of it, but what they've done down by their Cucorian, it's incredible. We spend a lot of time down there. And made me think of it just yesterday, I was running around, and sometimes I go to a lot more stores than we think. I must've gone to five different stores, all in, and it just made me realize, this is a nice place to live. I want to live here, I want to spend my money in, money here, I want my family to live here. And if we can make it nicer, we might as well do it and just keep working on it. And I appreciate all your work. I know the economy is very difficult. I can't even begin to imagine the constraints you have on trying to make our community as good as it is. So keep up the good work. We're down at my level, running around out there, just living here. I'm noticing it, I notice the work. A lot of things we, whether it's tennis lessons right here or other things, we notice that it is a good city, but hey, this can only help it. So I appreciate your time, and I hope you take that into consideration.
Thank you. Mike Booth?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to stand up to object to this Fourth Amendment. I've been here before, I'm sure you know. My main objection to it is a question of power. There are only three of you voting on this amendment because there is a potential conflict of interest in the other two members. This, three members are basically going to make decisions on, in the redevelopment area. You are the agency. You are, there's no oversight on your three individuals. There's no recourse that you give the public to your decisions besides referendum, recall, or waiting for an election to get rid of you. Participation by the public, to me, is important. Your objection, your, your decisions can change the city. If, if a public, if the public wants to object and wants to stop your decision-making, they should have some means of doing that. There should be an ability to petition to block your decisions. Now, the main problem I have is with eminent domain. Eminent domain, basically, these three members of the city council can take out any business.
Sir, would you like to address the council?
Okay. Any business, profitable or unprofitable. New, old, established, successful, it doesn't matter. You can take out buildings that are two years old and destroy profitable businesses and relocate them to unknown locations. This is too much power. The community is likely to object to some of your decisions, and you, you should provide some means of, of the public being able to object to your decision-making. The public are the sovereigns of a democracy. They have the right to be able to involve themselves in decision-making and not have to go to the extreme of a recall or vote for an election to elect, to kick you out. A specific Plan 26 for the downtown area is all old buildings, and it's historic old buildings. And now, there are two projects been approved that are four-story, and they're going to be new buildings that are completely, doesn't make sense, except that it will provide the city with money. We should provide a better idea, a better plan. And public particip, better public participation, more public participation is important. Project area committee can advise you, but they have no power over your decisions whatsoever, and you really don't even have to go to them for, for advice on most things that are happening inside the redevelopment area. I'd like you to reconsider this, this concentration of power. You are going to be out of office in two, two years, four years, six years, eight years, whatever. This project, this plan is going to go on for 30 years.
Mr. Booth, your time's up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chuck Rabel?
Chuck Rabel, 821 Crescent, on behalf of myself. We missed a great opportunity. A great opportunity to get the facts on the table, all the facts. Every year, the review of the redevelopment, the report is due in December. That could've been moved forward. I probably have as much knowledge as anybody in the, in the public about what, what this is. You're not going to generate any new revenue. You want to put revenue into redevelopment instead of going to the general fund. The general fund is owed $20 million now by redevelopment. If you chose to, that, those monies could've already gone into sidewalks or whatever. The general fund has grown since 2003, the general fund was under $41 million. The current general fund is $74 million. And yet, we keep loaning monies to redevelopment. Got no trouble with it. You, you guys control everything, the process, the agenda, the information. And you've got the votes, and this is probably gonna happen. As long as it's gonna happen, maybe some thought should be given to adding undergrounding of utilities to the street improvements and the sidewalks. Thank you.
Next would be, I believe it's Brian Cunningham?
Good evening. My name is Brian Cunningham. I'm here representing Goodwill Industries. Goodwill is a nonprofit organization that specializes in, in providing jobs for people with disabilities or who otherwise have, have difficulty finding employment. Goodwill has a store on, on Escondido Avenue that has been there since roughly 2000, next to Yardage Town. That lease is expiring in January of 2009, and we've been working to relocate that store for a little over a year now. Back in September of last year, we had a signed letter of intent to relocate that store into the, the building that was formerly occupied by Tweeter on Plaza Avenue in the Pavilion Shopping Center. We were told at the time, in working with economic development, that what, there was not a zoning issue with Goodwill relocating there, but in the weeks that followed that, there was a moratorium passed in the redevelopment area precluding, precluding Goodwill's use as a second-hand or discount store. We are all for the redevelopment. I'm a, I'm a real estate broker by trade. I was involved in the Vista Village project from the ground up with Reincy Centers in 2002 and 2003. We have no problem with redevelopment. The, the only thing we would like to point out is that because this moratorium was passed, if, if, if the redevelopment area is expanded to include essentially all of the retail in Vista, Goodwill is not gonna be able to relocate this store, and when that lease expires, the 25-plus people that work there, several of which have severe disabilities, are going to be out of a job. So I would just ask that you take that into account, and when you vote on this. And even if there's a way to pass a temporary reprieve on this moratorium, to apply to this particular relocation, that would help us, you know, save these people their jobs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next would be Paul Ryder?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Paul Ryder. I live at 1923 Goodwin Drive. I've been a homeowner in Vista for 12 years now, moved over from Escondido. And before I moved over here, I noticed, before I bought property in Vista, I knew that, I noticed that this town was basically behind the times and was a very small city. And I did a little research, found out that some of the visions that Gloria Cunningham, excuse me, Gloria McClellan had, and she was a true visionary, and I saw some great hope there, and I've seen this development take place. And I'm, I'm a proponent, I, I stand here for myself, but also for the homeowners in Vista and believe that the redevelopment is important for Vista. I believe it'll attract future business and homeowners, and that we need to keep moving forward. I saw North Santa Fe redeveloped and saw that turn around and, and just made Vista a better place to live. So I believe that redevelopment is a must for Vista. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zinner, could you put the redevelopment map on the screen while we're hearing these people come up and speak? The one that has the current boundaries as well as the proposed boundaries? Yeah, thank you very much. Next is Dan Hopper?
Hi, my name is Dan Hopper. I reside at 333 North Emerald Drive, number 160. And I want to speak in favor of the Amendment Number Four. I think redevelopment is just almost entirely a win-win situation. There's been a lot of successful redevelopment in the City of Vista in the past. Many, many other cities have used redevelopment very successfully to revitalize areas. We have many areas that need revitalization in the City of Vista, and we commend those who've put a lot of work into this entire effort, and, and I just want to speak in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Tom Fleming?
Hi, I'm Tom Fleming. I reside at, on Grapevine Road here in Vista, and also have a one-day shoe repair in the downtown area. I didn't intend really to speak on this, what I put this for oral communications, but I will speak to this. I am in favor of the redevelopment. I think it's a great idea. I've heard people comment that- I've heard people comment that it will negatively impact their property values because of the classifying them as, what is it, down, in, in what, you know, they're blighted, yeah. But the bottom line is it increases the value, because when you, when you come in and you put new sidewalks in, you put new gutters in, you put new sewage line, you redo the pub, the public utilities, that does nothing but increase the value of the property. It doesn't, just because it's, it's not going to be downgraded because it's blighted. One of the things I would like to also speak to is the, the deed for code enforcement officers when you do this. I realize that we only have one in the city right now, and there was a car that was parked on Broadway right down from my shop for two weeks, that was parked in the street, that I couldn't get, it took two weeks to get it moved. It was not in a parking lot, it was by one of the lights. And I was told they only have one officer, and so, so they're really restricted in that respect, so...
That's one parking officer.
Oh, just one parking officer? Okay. I was holding one...
Parking code enforcement officer.
I was told it was one code enforcement. So, the, my thought was that a code enforcement officer should be self-sufficient as far as incomes anyway. I mean, there's enough things that they can find cars parked where they're not supposed to be parked, they can find grass that needs to be cut with the, with the, the fire season coming. There's a lot of things that they could take care of, so. Anyway, bottom line is I'm, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, as the president of the VBB also.
Okay, fine. If you want to wait also until after this meeting's over, I'll go ahead and call on you for oral communications. I'm sorry, I...
Well, that's fine. That's fine. That, I didn't care what I wanted to say anyway.
Okay. Very good. Mary Cook?
Hi. My husband and I and two children live at three three eight Skyline Drive in Vista. We've owned a home in Vista for five years, and prior to that, we've lived in North County for about twenty-five years. We've seen, we lived in Carlsbad and have seen that come around with their redevelopment, and then Oceanside after that, and we're just really in favor of the redevelopment of Vista. It's just been an incredible thing to just see that whole Krikorian area and just revitalized, and it just really encourages people to get out and enjoy the community and, and feel safe about it, too, letting your kids go down to that Krikorian area without, you know, your teenage kids, without adults, parents being there, and it's just, it's made it really a much safer feeling place, and just a lot more enjoyable to get out, and, and we're in favor of the redevelopment.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Tomei? Tomea? Tomei, okay.
Hello. My name is Jamie Tomei. I live on four five three Alvarado Terrace with my husband and two children, two small children, and with all due respect to Dr. Booth, I'm no doctor myself, but I respect all three of you that are making this decision tonight, and as a democracy, we, as the people of Vista, have elected you to speak for us and make these big decisions that will affect this community, and I think that you will do the correct thing. And the only thing that is constant, as we know, is change, and this community needs change. I walk down the street of Palm with my two kids, and we seriously dodge from one side to the other and have our strategic path to get down the hill so that we don't get hit by a car, and we need sidewalks and gutters and streetlights. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Catherine Manis?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Catherine Manis, and I'm the executive director of the Vista Townsite Community Partnership and a resident of Vista. For many years, I have listened to concerns of townsite residents, and what I have heard over and over again is that if the city could improve the infrastructure of that neighborhood, then the townsite would be a much safer place for everyone. So, as a mechanism to do just that, the Vista Townsite Community Partnership's Board of Directors and residents are in favor of the redevelopment plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next would be Dwight Horn?
Good evening. My name's Dwight Horn. I live at two five three five Vendemia with my wife Cindy's here as well. First of all, I just thank each one of you for the job you do, being in the public spotlight. Some, you get criticized a lot more than, than you get praised, so thank you for what you do. I'm definitely in favor of redevelopment. It brings a broader tax base to our city, and that's important for me. My concern and reason for speaking is I really hope that you think much more broadly than at least I have seen reflected in newspapers locally about what's happening. We really need to bring, we, Vista is a center of, of the hub of North County. We have a train system that brings people here. We have major highways that are being expanded, seventy-eight, seventy, seventy-six. We've got the fifteen, the five, we've got a transit system coming to us. We are in the center of all of that. Is there a vision that much, that's much broader than bringing a, a new hamburger store here, which is what I have seen in the paper? For example, there is, there's high-end shopping that could be brought into this area, which would be funneled down, bring people to our area. You could take some of that, that redevelopment area over on Emerald and really do a lot to bring in particularly business and pharmaceutical, medical pharmaceutical business into that area. There's a lot of open land there that ought to be brought in as well, in addition to maybe hotel, if this becomes more of a central hub. Down here on the new Cindy Center Drive, which is a great idea to rename that and make it more of our city, there's a lot of area there that could be done, the Vons that will be taken away, you could bring in car dealerships. There's a high-end car dealership in Carlsbad that was just rejected, the Hohen Car, Car Dealership, that brings in high-end automobiles, a higher tax base for us. We have a school right downtown that we haven't done, that sits as a magnet school for two hundred people. We took all these people and built this huge school over Rancho Minerva, and now we bus people to the school. Could we not take some of our property, refurbish this school right here, bring these people back, and maybe provide that school to another school that might in some way be able to give us property and make a swap of some kind? There are lots of ideas, but my concern is, as a taxpayer of this, of the city, is that we're not thinking broadly. If we just bring in small businesses, we lose the potential to really make Vista what it could be as a hub in North County. So I just ask that you consider a much broader vision, and again, thank you for each, for what each one of you does.
Thank you very much. Pamela Marchetto? Please forgive me if I... Oh, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Marchetto, and I am a resident of Vista and have been for the last twenty-five years, have raised four children, and I'm here tonight to commend you in your efforts to stimulate development in our city, also to encourage you to continue to do so. I read in the paper a comment that was made by Mr. Rawlings regarding the eminent domain issue, and I thought, you know, that's fair, that's fair to say. He said that you only need look to history to predict the future, and you have not set a precedence for eminent domain. I think it is a reasonable assumption that you will not do so now, and so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Shelley Weaver?
Hi. My name is Shelley Weaver. We live at four zero seven Dennis Drive. My family and I are military. We just got here, our second tour, from over in Okinawa, and the first tour, we weren't able to buy here because of the cost of living, but, you know, luckily, unfortunately for others, the, the market has come down, and we were able to buy in Vista just a couple of months ago. So we're very excited to be here in the city, right above Walmart, so we love that. But we, sorry, you got a little Walmart. But since we were here our last tour, the Krikorian and that whole shopping center is new, and we love it. I mean, it's nice to have someplace to go, a lot of local shopping, a lot of good restaurants and stuff, and so we would just love to continue to see new development and more military families come in to where they can afford it instead of having to go out to Hemet or Temecula like it was previously, so we're very fortunate and very happy to be here in Vista, and we'd love to see the development continue.
Thank you. That's all of the speaker slips I have. Are there any others that did not fill out a speaker slip or that would like to fill out a speaker slip while the public hearing is still open? Okay. Seeing none, I think what we need to do at this point, we're going to have to have a short recess so that staff can do some paperwork that we need for the second half of this, so we'll take, how long do you think you're going to need?
Maybe I wouldn't think more than ten or fifteen minutes.
Okay. We'll be back in session at, no later than twenty-five after six. Okay, we'll be back in session at no later than twenty-five after six. Boy, it got quiet. We're not quite ready yet, it'll just be one minute. Judy, you're not proofreaded.
Yeah.
Well done? Okay, this meeting is back in order, and thank you very much for your patience during our recess. I have not received any more speaker slips, and so this public hearing is now closed. Mr. Piper, did you have some material that you needed to add into the record?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we received a written communication from Mr. Michael Booth this evening, and under the redevelopment law, we are required to respond to any written communications in writing prior to taking a vote on the plan.
Is that the only one that we've received?
The only written communication that we've received relative to, that would require a written response. Staff prepared the written response, and it is in front of each of you, and if you would each be so kind as to indicate on the record if you've read the response. Mrs. Ritter?
Yes.
I didn't understand it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor? Okay, very good. So, that letter and that response are now part of the administrative record, and then during the break, we also received from the county of San Diego a letter which I'll ask to be entered into the record, and it's very short, so I will take a moment to read it, and it's addressed to the mayor and the members of the council, and indicates the draft amendment number four to the redevelopment plan for the Vista redevelopment project and related materials have been reviewed pursuant to Board of Supervisors policy A-109. Based on that review, the proposed project area number four, as described in the draft Vista redevelopment project, amendment number four, report to the city dated August 26, 2008, is a legitimate use of the redevelopment process. Sincerely, Michael Huss, the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer of the Community Services Group. So I'd ask that that also be made part of this evening's record, and return the chair to you for...
Okay, thank you very much. I guess it's our turn to discuss then. So, Mr. Gronky?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just start off by saying what a pleasant evening has been. We have been through prior meetings, and because of misinformation, there's been a real scare about eminent domain, and so I want to thank staff for really getting the message out, going to meetings, I guess in the newspaper, numerous times in the newspaper, the PAC meetings, the Velocity newsletter you send out. So, as I heard from the speakers tonight, people understand that this does not imply that we're gonna take their homes in the process of trying to improve our neighborhoods, so I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank the speakers for all the support that I heard tonight, too. I do have a couple of questions of staff. When it comes to, it comes to properties that are, there are sort of properties that are zoned for commercial and are presently used as residential. Of the total number of homes that we are planning to amend in this, what percentage is that? Is it insignificant?
Councilmember, it's a very, very small number. We estimate less than two dozen homes would fall into the category of non-conforming use.
And in our, in our action tonight, we're gonna probably encompass hundreds of homes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. And when I look over this, I just wonder about, you know, I was looking in the document, and I'm looking on page thirty-nine, I believe this was in the White Document you gave to us, and it talked about overcrowding. And unfortunately, in some areas that we're trying to address tonight, it appears that the overcrowding in some of our households is as high as thirty percent?
That's correct. It's part of our studies to evaluate whether we can and should expand the area. One of the areas that we look at is overcrowding, and in order to address overcrowding, you need the ability to use the tools that redevelopment bring to the table.
So, in bringing these neighborhoods into the redevelopment area, we'll be able to somehow supply additional housing, long-term housing?
There's a myriad of things that we would like to try to do. One would be to provide additional affordable housing, additional housing in general, and also to bring to bear some of the housing tools that we have in place now that we currently use in the redevelopment area. We would be able to use those in the, in the proposed amended area.
And if I'm to understand right, once they're in the redevelopment area, then we get credit from the state for that?
Yes, yes, we are required to have a certain number of affordable units in the city, and to the extent that we construct those within the redevelopment area, in the expanded redevelopment area included, we would, we would be able to make some progress on those requirements.
Good, okay, great. That's a great thing. I just want to reiterate again, when I see a room full of people like this, and I think, oh my God, we're in trouble tonight, but I heard nothing but positive things about our action that we might be taking tonight, so that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mrs. Ritter?
One of the people said out there that our decisions can change the city, and I have to tell you that from, since I've been on here and since I've been working to improve the city, I am really proud of what we've done for our city from the last few years with the redevelopment project. When I, when I first got interested in the downtown area, I bought a property downtown in Vista, and it was, downtown was not looking so good, and so I got on specific Plan Twenty-Six to help write that, and then I was one of the founders of the Business Peoples Association, the VVVA, which was the VTC, now it's a VVVA. And I worked on redevelopment, we didn't have redevelopment at that time, and I remember, you know, working hard on that, and then one person held up our redevelopment in Vista, so we were behind some of the other cities, so. And when I first got on the council, the Krikorian was all a piece of dirt, there was all the dirt lot in there, and there were actually some businesses still left in there, and so, and then the second time I ran, we had the stuff done underground, all the infrastructure was done, but nothing showed yet, and so the people were going, oh, you know, that's never gonna happen down there. So I'm so proud today to look at the Krikorian Theater Complex and see how successful it is. It's been, you know, kind of a long, long haul since nineteen eighty-one, working on the downtown and, you know, seeing that. So, this is very exciting to me. It's so exciting to be a part of the city and to see all that's going on in our city. I love to see all the improvements and, you know, what we've done, and I see nothing but future, you know, good things to happen. We, we still have work to do, we still have South Santa Fe to improve, and there's a lot of things that we, you know, are on our plate, new restaurants along the Creek Walk. There's still a lot of work we have left to do, and, but this will help us, so I'm so excited to hear all of you say that, you know, most of you say that you approve of it, and I'm looking forward to the future of our city.
Thank you. I don't think a lot of people really realize what redevelopment has done for this community already. It's been a program that's been a part of this city since the early nineties, and we first started it back in the late, late eighties. But a lot of the things we had to do was to set the stage for what we're able to do now, and to, to prepare for the population that we have now, and to do a lot of things to include infrastructure. You may not be aware, but all of the bridges and overpasses that go along Highway Seventy-Eight within the city boundaries were all refurbished and widened due to redevelopment and due to the part that we, or due to the fact that we had the ability to piggyback on some other funds, and we used redevelopment funds to do that, so we were able to build those. If we hadn't have done that, the traffic, you think traffic's bad now? It would have been horrendous. There's a lot of things that we have been able to accomplish with redevelopment, there's a lot more that we need to. The infrastructure in our, in our residential areas is horrendous, and I don't think there's anyone on the city council that doesn't recognize that. I'd like to see, as Mr. Abel said, do a lot of undergrounding with, with our redevelopment funding, as well as put in sewers and put in some curb and gutter and sidewalk in a number of areas that, that really need it, especially in the central core of the city of Vista. We've got a lot of work to do on South Santa Fe. South Santa Fe has been a, has been a project goal of our redevelopment project area ever since I can remember. In fact, all of that was when we originally began our redevelopment project, that was gonna be one of the first things we did, but because we had the availability of some state and federal funding for the widening of our overpasses, we put that on delay, and it's been delayed all these years. And so as a result, I think that's something that needs to be done very, very soon. But as I sit here and look at that map, I always thought it looked like a lobster with the way the redevelopment agency area is, because it just includes certain, as you see, certain portions along our major thoroughfares. But this is beginning to flesh out the community in terms of being able to provide infrastructure for the entire community. I know there's been some comments made that the general fund, the redevelopment agency is in debt to the general fund, but, you know, that's what redevelopment is. Redevelopment doesn't have the ability, or doesn't have the funding itself, and so it has to borrow from the general fund. When it borrows from the general fund, there's a particular period of time, and then it's all paid back. And each, on a yearly basis, we pay back the general fund. Redevelopment does that, and redevelopment is based on, on debt, and it's, how it always has been, it always will be, because it has to be able to do things now with money that it's going to accumulate over a longer period of time. But in any, anyway, I didn't want to talk too much about it, but I think that redevelopment has been a very good tool for this community, and will continue to be an excellent tool. I'm glad to hear that, that you enjoy the Vista Krikorian project. I think that's, that sample of what we can do has been really something that has helped us with this particular project amendment, because it kind of gives you an indication of some of the things that we'll be able to do in the future, and we're very confident that, that you'll, that you'll be pleased with the things that are planned. Now, it's true that only the three of us at this particular time in history can vote, because the other two have property owned in that property, in that area, and they can't vote. But, you know, councils come and go, but I think that this plan is not gonna come and go. We're gonna establish it and make it so that it will have a long-lasting effect on the community, and as such, I think that we feel the responsibility very heavily, the three of us, for things that need to be done, and we would like to see those things accomplished as quickly as possible. So with that, is there someone that would like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion on amendment four, and I also agree to the four resolutions.
We've already closed the public hearing, if I remember.
Public hearing's been closed.
And I just want to say that for myself, unlike what the speaker said before, I feel very comfortable about this decision tonight, and very positive that my predecessors in the future will look at down and say, you know, they've made a good decision tonight, so, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, but did he say only four? Are there, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Seven and, I mean... Mr. Rollins, how many resolutions do you want us to pass tonight?
Moving staff recommendation would be wonderful.
Oh, I don't think that'll work.
Staff recommendation? That's what he's, that's...
Second.
Okay, the maker and the second both agree that we should adopt those resolutions included in the staff recommendation. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes. If there's no further discussion, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes unanimously with the three of us voting yes. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate your participation. Okay, the next step is to get a belt. So we're going to do that next. Thank you. Okay, if those members of the council that are still here that were not on this would like to come back. We do need to conclude our meeting, ladies and gentlemen, so if you could discuss whatever you'd like to discuss out in the foyer, that would be appreciated. Okay, the last things we have would be reports from both our city attorney and city manager, or assistant city manager. Any reports?
I would just like to thank those who endured the AB 1234 training today. I appreciate your attendance and your wakefulness.
Oh, it was very enjoyable. I think. Mr. Johnson?
I just wanted to mention that the state has finally adopted its budget. The governor signed it today. And out of all the many potential takeaways or borrowing that the state could have done, the one issue that affects the city the most is a $350 million statewide takeaway, for lack of a better term, of redevelopment funds.
You scared me for a minute there. $350 --
Statewide.
Statewide.
Yes. So staff is assessing what that means to the city individually, but it's good news that the state has finally signed their budget.
Well, it's good news in one sense. In another sense, it's a fact that they still fail to solve the problem. And we're going to face the same thing next year. So it's both good and bad news. Mr. Gronky? Mr. -- Mrs. Ritter?
I have something, and of course, everybody left that I wanted to tell this to, but maybe there's somebody on the television that will listen to this. Drive along the freeway, and there's so much trash lately, and I don't know if it's blowing out of the back of pickup trucks or, you know, what, but please, people, you know, pick up your trash and make our city and our freeways look nice. It's just very trashy along the freeway, by Lowe's and Vista. And so just, you know, have pride in your community and try and -- don't throw it in the back of your pickup truck. Put it in a trash receptacle somewhere and try and clean up our city. Thank you.
Good point. Mr. Ken?
Mary, yesterday I had the pleasure with Dan Ray of our Business Park of spending several hours with the Marine Corps. Our Marine Light Attack Squadron 396 will be deployed to Iraq here in, I think, about 60 days or so. And the message they asked me to bring back to Vista was how much they really appreciate the support for their families, for the Family Day. They're looking forward to that again. They think there'd be at least 500 people that would like to participate in that. But they said the impact on the families was just huge, that it actually, the community cares enough to do that for them and support them in that way. And they know they'll be gone during the holidays, and they're hoping that we'll be able to do something for them. And Mr. Ray and I assured them that if we have a little heads-up notice, we can probably do that quite well. And they really appreciate staff's efforts, Wendy Romanoli and others that have done that, so. And then lastly --
Before we go on, just the last thing. All I can say about that Family Day, it was cool. It was really cool. It was fun, yeah.
I'm sorry I was out of town, but what a great group of bright-eyed people that are defending our country. They really are well-trained. They're -- I wish, looking at their equipment, we, as the country, were providing them better equipment. Some of the flight avionics equipment they use is 15 years old, and really shouldn't even be in there. It's hard to use, and -- but they don't complain. They just go on and do their job. And let's see, tomorrow, Mr. Lopez and I will be going to Long Beach, I think, along with Mr. Piper for the League of California Cities. Mr. Piper, I think, is presenting. We'll look forward to that.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there a resolution on there about, or is there anything to do with the San Diego County's proposal for their fire?
Yes.
Is there?
Yes, there is. No, 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 there's not. No, there's not.
Okay, I was going to say, vote against it. That would be my instruction.
No, there's not. They're all statewide issues and pretty much in line with our legislative agenda.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. I'm going to take a couple of minutes to talk about something, an idea that I've had for a while here. I want to thank the council for passing that item tonight. It was very important for our community here in Vista, because I was on the original committee to bring redone the city of Vista. And it's been a very positive thing for our community. But one of the things that I know, because of where my business is on South Santa Fe, is when you look at the hills from Lata Deloma, Monta Vista, that whole area, it's underground, there's a river coming down there. Eighteen feet under the level of the street is a crystal-clear water coming underneath there. They did some testing there a while back, and I happened to be there when the people were there testing that water. And he says, here, you want a drink? I go, huh, no. He says, this is very clean water. You're lucky here in this community. It's that way. So as I thought about it, I said, boy, pumping water. With all the problems that we have in the state now, with them cutting back, the farmers cutting everyone back, that we have redevelopment coming in, what we should do is drill, that water's there. Again, we're hoping to do it here on Civic Center. But if we could do the infrastructure, use the water only for the infrastructure, for the irrigating of the plants and all the landscaping that we're going to do on the South Santa Fe corridor, would save us tremendous amount of water. And it's just in that corridor area, we would not have to buy water, because it is there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. With that, again, it's been a historical night in Vista, and we'll conclude the meeting.